Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
She's in the woodshed again.
In the woodshed. So, so Chris?
Saying now, pretty outside of the site and she's like.
Are we live yet?
We're not, we're not broadcasting live yet.
Okay. Chris, was this the popping sound you heard?
No.
I don't think so.
That wasn't it?
It sounded more electrical, staticky.
I was wondering if it was me.
I don't think so.
No, I didn't hear anything.
Okay. That probably means it was you.
Evening Ragav, how are you?
Doing good, Mr. Olson. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Good to see you.
Nice to see our students.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
You guys work real hard.
Are we all here now, Chris?
One, two, three, count four.
What happened to Courtney? She was on and then off.
I think, I'm sure she'll come back.
Okay.
Anybody else we're waiting for?
How are those later school start times going?
Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
All right, we're gonna broadcast and I'll start recording.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Good evening. We are back from executive session, so we're gonna jump right into some old business and I think we have, I'm gonna turn it over to superintendent because I think there are some COVID updates to share. And just, Bill, just a reminder to people if they can mute their audio when they're not speaking, that way we eliminate background noises and can hear speakers better.
All right, thank you, Avery. Carrie and I were on a statewide conference call again this morning with the Commissioner of Education. And we listened, obviously, like everyone else, to the governor who pronounced that the public schools will be closed for the remainder of the school year. The commissioner had indicated that to us privately earlier in the morning in the conversation. Asked us certainly not to share that until the governor made the announcement. And we all respected that request. There will be some additional guidance coming out periodically from the Department of Education with respect to some power standards, in other words, priority standards, curriculum standards, areas that represent the essence of what the DESE would like districts to focus on to a greater extent. Certainly focusing on also reinforcing skills that have been learned to this point in time, but as I've indicated to you in the past, we are choosing to move ahead with the curriculum content also because we think that will serve our students well. I did send out a message to parents and the staff late this afternoon indicating what we heard today that the DESE will be in touch with all districts over the next two months to make sure that there's a a safe and successful transition to the end of the school year. They will also be adjourning some committees to discuss what startup will look like at some point in the future, whether it be summer extended year programming. We're not sure of that yet. The DESE will provide some additional guidance on that at a later date, which we hope will be sooner rather than later. But if we do come back, as we all hope, at the end of August, early September, that we will all be practicing the same procedures for the safety of students and our staff for the, basically the reunification of everyone back into the system and into that traditional form of education that we've had known for so many years. So, everyone is committed to making it happen. There was also some talk, Bill Bell from the, who is the CFO, Chief Financial Officer of the DESE, talking about revenue projections for the remainder of this year and for next year. Obviously, it's a, it's not a particularly positive picture. So, we're gonna have to be very, very careful with our approach to fiscal planning for the remainder of fiscal 20, but also as we launch into fiscal 21 also. So, Carrie, anything that you took away from that meeting in particular that I haven't mentioned?
Well, I just want to point out that certainly the announcement today from Governor Baker did not come as a surprise to any of us, but certainly the wave of reality set in when it became official. So, I know it left many parents and students and staff heartbroken that they can't celebrate the completion of another school year. And while we have mentioned many times that we don't think remote learning is comparable to face-to-face interaction between students and their peers and teachers, but there are some byproducts that are positive that may come along with this, and we just encourage families to try to work with their students to really highlight those and whether it be, of course, any positive changes that this makes would be different from one family to another. So, whether it be better sleep patterns because now students aren't having to get the bus at a certain time or opportunities to kind of do their schoolwork and then maybe some extra space in their day to learn something new that they have always wanted to do but simply couldn't make the time for. Some students are benefiting over the autonomy they feel over the schedules that they have. So, when they want to do some math, they can do some math and then go take a break and go out and swing for a little while and then come back in and do the rest. So, we just encourage families to continue to take a look and identify what that silver lining may be for each individual case and continue to highlight that to help people cope. So, we've got seven weeks to go now with remote learning and as Bill mentioned, I think we are in some cases ahead of the game because the guidance was to, even after choice boards, to not move forward with any additional learning. But we did, that was just a suggestion, certainly not a mandate. And we did feel as though our plan allowed for continuous learning. And so now, some districts will be shifting to kind of a third plan because during this time after choice boards, but with the May 4th intended return to school, they didn't begin moving, moving forward with the additional learning and now we'll have to shift again. And so, I'm, I'm pleased with the work that the staff has done so that we have kind of less of a jump. And it will continue to be an iterative process as we continue to receive feedback, but all in all, I think it's been incredibly positive, given the circumstances. Bill also mentioned a lot of the uncertainty around budgets, particularly looking forward to the FY21 budget because the state won't have theirs in time, their new revised version of the FY21 budget for July 1. I have been in consultation with Bill and I have a vacancy for a curriculum coordinator position for next school year. And so, we're going to put that higher on hold, not to change the curriculum coordinator model, but to modify the current roles such that we can avoid having to hire somebody new for this school year, thus bringing up some funds for the one time next school year to apply to other things that come up due to disclosure. So, those are the types of creative things that we're looking at as kind of preventative measures as we don't, again, know what FY21 is going to look like. I did want to just add on that the commissioner also mentioned this morning that September 14th, the Boston Marathon will likely be a statewide additional holiday in Massachusetts. It's not set in stone yet, but it's going in that direction. So, his guidance was if we are planning our calendars to certainly plan for that day being a no-school day. It doesn't replace Patriots Day, which will be on April 19th next school year. So, this would be an added holiday for this one year. I know Bill and Jim have been in frequent, have had frequent discussions about what this looks like for end of year at the high school level, particularly for the seniors. And I had a great conversation with Jim Antonelli today. And he did share, of course, that the students would not be able to experience the Disney trip and he felt scraped that there will be the refunds that are given and that has been communicated to those families. We will be modifying the remote learning timeline for seniors. We're looking at May 15th because that's when they would be, that would be their last day of school before they go off to Disney. And I know Jim is working very hard with his team to look at virtual graduation options for students on or around, keeping with the June 5th date so that the students can have some sort of celebratory closure to their experience here in Westford.
Thanks, Carrie. Can I also mention, Avery, that I did communicate with town manager today and with Paul Fox that I will not be filling for the foreseeable future the facilities position that was occupied by Richie Crocker. And similarly, Carrie, I need to make whatever reductions I can so that we can continue to leverage our financial position for the remainder of this year and moving into fiscal 21. Every little bit counts. We have no spare money. As you know, that fiscal 21 represented the third consecutive year of funding that was from the town incremental funding that was below the 3.3% average increase that we had received over 15 years. So, we've done an awful lot of cutting and modifying programs, services, staffing over the last two and a half years. And so, there is no more water in the well right now. And so, we're looking to create as much savings as we possibly can to try and leverage our position in the next fiscal year.
So, I have a quick question for probably Bill and Carrie. I know, I'm thrilled to hear that the seniors, you guys are thinking about transition for the seniors, but I've had a lot of questions from parents about the lower grades for the eighth graders going to WA, for the fifth graders who are going on to the middle school, the third graders, sorry, the second graders going on to third grade. And our staff has been fantastic in trying to maintain connections, but as my own fourth grader said to me today, she's really upset that the school year is going to end and there isn't going to be an end of the school year. So, I don't know what the answer is and I'm sure people are already working on it, but I do want to put, you know, just a plug in there for the other transitional periods for kids because especially rising to middle school and rising to high school, those are huge moves for kids. So, whatever we can do to somehow create some sort of virtual transition for them too would be greatly appreciated by the parents.
Glad you mentioned that, Alicia, because we are working on that with the principals, because those transitions to children of that age, virtually every bit as important as graduating from, from high school. And we know that those benchmarks in their lives are extraordinarily important. And so, we're trying to create some, some special events for them, some special recognition so that they have that feeling. It can't be replicated as, you know, in a brick and mortar way, but we want them also as they're transitioning to feel very special.
Any other questions? I guess that was sort of curriculum and, and first round of COVID updates. We have had a question come in on the, the Q and A, which I thank people for using so appropriately. Do we have any update on the calendar for next year?
Well, we're just waiting to hear with certainty whether or not September 14th will be a statewide holiday. It was left a little bit open-ended by the commissioner this morning, and so I'd rather have that cast in concrete. And as soon as that is, we'll come back to you one way or another, whether it's a statewide holiday or not. Get back to you with the, with the calendar. I was, I was hoping that it might be limited to Suffolk County, but from listening to the commission this morning, it, it doesn't sound like that at the present time.
Bill, could you also address, there's been questions about changes at WA with some staffing and some, some, let's see.
Some FTE changes?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes. This is all part of the staff movement and not necessarily reduction in force per se, but does have some impact every year at the high school where depending upon class sizes, course registrations, et cetera, that Jim Antonelli does make some changes in the full-time equivalencies of staff. It has impacted a couple of staff members at the high school in the area of social studies and English language arts, if I recall correctly. So, it's, it's nothing unusual. We've generally experienced this each year. It's just, we're trying to put everything together right now based on the best available knowledge. We're reviewing with the administrators, the staff movements and the RIF movements tomorrow. We're also later in the day tomorrow reviewing that with the WEA consultation committee. So, Carrie, I don't know if you want to chip in in terms of my comment that it's, it's not particularly unusual to see different FTEs in various disciplines from year to year.
That covers it.
Yep.
Were, were any programs eliminated?
No. No. We know programs eliminated, just a couple of staff changes in, in full-time equivalency.
But our bottom line budget didn't change then because we're not letting go more staff. It's just part of how things fell as far as the RIF process.
That's correct. There are no more, excuse me, budget reductions. It's just the shifting of, of the staff.
Gloria, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, my question along those, along those lines, we went through a very difficult budget process. And there, there were some reductions as part of that. There were lots of discussions about where those reductions should be. So, if there is shifting in terms of the apportionments of the FTEs at WA, when will we have those numbers and know precisely where those shifts are occurring? When will we have that information?
Well, you, you, you'll have that as soon as we confirm everything with the administrators tomorrow and review it with the teachers' union. We think it's pretty much set in concrete right now. And so, we'll be glad to share that with you right away.
I, I just think it's important to, to have that shared publicly with school committee, with the public so that, that everyone understands, you know, where these changes are coming from and that we be as transparent as, as possible.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely agree.
Megan? Sorry, had to unmute. So, sort of piggybacking on what Gloria said, I agree, we had all these lengthy discussions. So, I'm sort of curious about the timing. I'd like to better understand, given that we had all of those extremely lengthy evening discussions about one particular area that was a .6 teacher, which I know was reflective of a reduction, but we talked about enrollment in those sections and number of students in those sections. And this appears to be affecting a core subject area as well as an elective area from what I could tell from the question. And so, I'm wondering, why now? And I don't, I don't have a high school student, so I just want to understand why would those shifts happen? It, it seems like that might be more likely once you understand, for example, in an elective area, what students are selecting the following year or if there was a change in enrollment that we're having. But it, it does seem odd. I, I mean, I hear you saying that those are normal shifts that happen, but I'm just wondering with regards to having had such extensive discussions, given our budget climate, why these are outside of that, I guess, and, and the timing related to that?
Well, I, I actually don't have a, a good answer other than the fact that as I've said, there have been a number of years where, particularly at the high school, there have been some FTE changes based on student interest, based on section sizes, based on sometimes requested movement of a staff to fill in a section of a staff member who might, you know, might be leaving. And so, there's a number of iterative changes. I'll be glad to have Jim provide us with something in writing, if you'd like, for our very next meeting so that you can more thoroughly understand that.
I think that would be helpful. I, I was a little surprised by the question, so I think if we can, we've answered it and I'd like to make sure that we follow up with answers or some numbers is more, more than answers, numbers. So, we get a better understanding. And so, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
We're glad to provide you with that.
Thank you. Okay, can we hear from our students who got an unofficial later start time for the remainder of their year? Who wants to go first and tell us how remote learning is going?
I can start. So, me and Ragav today, we like reached out to some of our friends and like specifically StuCo members or Student Council members about how it's going. And we just like compiled a list of like some of the things that people were saying. And I think like personally and like generally, everyone thinks that like logistically, it's been like pretty good, like considering the circumstances, like people are able to access their assignments and do the work and talk to their teachers, but there was also some complaints. One of the top complaints was that since there are so many classes being posted on Google Classroom, they're being like bombarded by Google Classroom notifications, which is kind of overwhelming from like each class, each teacher is posting like four or five times, like a day or a week. Sorry. Another complaint was that they think there's too much work being assigned, like in terms of like, like they can get it done, but like they've been stressed under the circumstances and they just think that the work is not like comparable to like their motivation and they just like can't like find the motivation to do that much work right now. Another complaint was because of like the credit, no-credit system, some students are unsure if they're getting credit at all because their teachers aren't being very clear about it. And then also that, like the system's supposed to be like we are Monday and then they're due the following Monday, but some teachers are like giving like assignments that are due like throughout the week and that's kind of confusing to people too and overwhelming. And I think Ragav has some of the other ones.
Yeah, so apparently some of the teachers are holding like random office hours at different times and some of them are just posting like 10 to 15 minutes before they do go on, which is hard for some students because they're like, we don't have the time to get on or they were unaware of it. Some teachers are not following the credit or no-credit sometimes. I don't know specifically for my teachers, they are, but I'm not sure which ones. And then also the credit or no-credit system makes some people feel like it's a lot of busy work and it's not something that's like helping them move forward. It's stuff that's just like continuously being reiterated continuously. And then having more regular scheduled like class meetings to do work would be more beneficial, people felt like. So, if we did like a Google meet with the entire class and the teacher could review the work and the material that we need to understand and learn at that moment would be helpful and then we can go off and learn and like do the exercises by ourselves. So, a couple of the student council members recommended that, but they also did say that there is difficulty with that because students do have like work and things like that right now, working in grocery stores and working around in the community, so it can conflict with their times. But overall, we did agree that the teachers are being really understanding and they're trying to help us out as much as they can. And during their office hours, it's a little difficult because they're not allowed to technically teach us any new material because not every single student's gonna be on, but during that time, they're able to like answer questions and like quell our stress and things like that.
That's, that's very helpful and I appreciate the feedback. Some of it is new, some of it we have heard already, and we will be more formally soliciting feedback as we come to the May 4th kind of deadline that has now been extended. It's an appropriate opportunity just to revisit what's working, what's not working, and then continue to allow it to be an iterative process. And, you know, certainly we'll work with the teachers and continue to make improvements, especially knowing that this is going to be long-term. So, that's incredibly helpful and we look forward to gathering more information. Thank you.
Anything else from the committee to ask the students?
May I just ask, are you staying positive, as positive as can be?
Trying my best. Trying to keep myself busy. I think at times it can get difficult. You get lost in your mind, but the teachers are very helpful. Talking to them is helpful and talking to your friends is helpful. But yeah, staying positive.
Just know how much we're thinking about you.
And if there's anything that we can do to better support the students, I know that we've got a lot of focus on the distance learning, sorry, the remote learning happening, but if there's anything we can do to support you guys emotionally and this is a huge thing to process, none of us has ever done this before. So, if there's anything we can do, please do not hesitate to reach out to us.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Soon, the two of you, would you be willing to join us again in May just to sort of give us another update and hear how things are? Because I, I miss your perspective and seeing your faces.
Yeah, I love you.
Very good. Then we'll, we'll continue to loop you in. If there's no more questions for the students, then I think we're moving to special education.
Okay. Not too much more to share than from last week. Last week, we shared that the remote learning plan template has been finalized. That went into the hands of our special educators and related service providers last Tuesday. And they have been working on them. As they have completed the remote learning plans, those have been shared with families. We're not holding and waiting to the due date of next Monday, the 27th, but our goal is to definitely have all of the plans in place by Monday, April 27th. The Russell Johnson, who is the Senior Associate Commissioner and State Director for Special Education, issued a letter last Friday. He made it available to districts and yesterday we posted it on our website. It has general information for families as well as a resource toolbox for families, which is giving them a little bit more guidance and some helpful hints of what they can do to help their children at home. There were a couple of things that were pointed out in there and I did share with you last week that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did give us the thumbs up to go ahead and do virtual team meetings. to go ahead and do virtual team meetings, if the district felt as though we had the capacity to do so. But also recognize that it was a local decision. And at that time, I did share with you that Westward, along with all of the other area districts in the Merrimack Valley, decided that we are not holding team meetings at this time, but we will continue to reevaluate that. Now with today's announcement, certainly that will trigger our reevaluation to see what meetings we can accomplish within this school year. We have about 800 students, or a little bit over 800 students on IEPs. Certainly, we've accomplished a lot of meetings up until this point in the school year, but we have a lot more to go. Some of them are initial evaluations, some of them are three-year reevaluations. Some cases, testing has been completed. In other cases, we were midstream testing, or testing hadn't even been started. So certainly, those outliers, we wouldn't be able to meet on. But we'll continue to discuss with our leadership team what the capacity is to start looking at team meetings, and then to see how we can move forward. The Department of Ed also is encouraging us to have team meetings in the fall. So it's going to be a lot of meetings that will occur when we do come online. And like I said last week, each time we hold a team meeting, we are taking the instructors away from the students. And so right now, with the remote learning period where this is all new to us, new to the students, new to the families, it certainly wasn't my priority to have our teachers involved in team meetings. I wanted them to feel comfortable with this new work condition that we have. And certainly in the fall, we're going to be anxious to be in front of our students and to start pulling staff members away from the students for the purpose of team meetings. It's just a lot to think about, a lot to balance, and we'll continue to have those sessions. Also, Alicia, I'm not sure if you want to chime in, but the CPAC has been fielding some questions. And we are going to hold a more formal CPAC question and answer at some point next week.
So as soon as we finalize those details, we will share those on the CPAC Facebook page. We'll share them with our email list. And we very much appreciate that Courtney is willing to try and sit and field some more of those questions. I know that I did forward you earlier today, questions about extended year. There are parents who are wondering whether that will happen. And I know you don't have those answers, because you just got this new information today. But know that Courtney and her staff are working on it, and we are trying to field as many questions as possible and move them on to you. And we're looking forward to having a discussion next week.
So in terms of extended year, we are hoping beyond hope that we will be able to welcome students into the school and provide the five weeks of summer school services that we do traditionally have. But we are going to start planning regardless, because we'll be providing those services remotely if we're not allowed to have students in the buildings. But that information will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Any other questions from committee to for Courtney and student services? Thank you, Courtney, so much for your hard work on getting some of our special kids taken care of.
You're welcome.
Ingrid, are you going, you have a financial update for us?
Well, you know, six hours that we, since we've, you know, officially now know that school will continue to be close to the year, does change things financially. We'll be presenting you with some decisions that you'll have to be making in the next few weeks. Right now, we're still focusing, as always, on the health and safety of our staff and students, but particularly, you know, the people that are in buildings still right now. And moving forward, Carrie and Bill already mentioned some of the hiring decisions that are not being taken. Every position that, whether it's a replacement or what is now, you know, going to be reevaluated. We're going to start the process of bringing to you recommendations for refunds to families. It's a very large task, so please have patience, families. Not only are our fee-based programs potentially eligible, but, you know, Disney Prom, there's a, I know at the high school, they actually ordered 1,000 extra checks from, just to write refunds. So it's it's a large and lengthy process, so I just will plead for patience. But we'll be bringing those recommendations to you the next few weeks. And still negotiating with our transportation vendors, and nothing really new there at this point. That's kind of it.
Bill and Carrie and Ingrid, are there any other year-end wrap-up kind of changes? I know we just got hit with this news at noon today. Are there other things that we should be looking ahead towards? And I'm sure we'll put that on our next agenda.
Well, I think, you know, looking at our buildings, you know, are there, can we preemptively go into summer mode with some of those, in the sense of just shutting things down? I mean, we honestly haven't had a chance to have any of these discussions yet. So I think there, as we process and wake up in the middle of night and think of things, we'll add them to the list.
You know, we're looking at the final modifications to the Abbott HVAC system. Those bids either came in today or coming in tomorrow. The general contract bid, we'll we'll look forward to accomplishing that during the summer. We're looking at the cost and any Americans with Disabilities Act work associated with moving the Millennium Pots or all of the Millennium School Playground to most likely the Robinson School that is in need of something that is more of a pre-K through to augmentation of playground equipment. Looking at what types of maintenance activities can be responsibly done during the summer. Also looking at some contingency plans, starting to talk about, if we're able to start up in early September, late August, whenever that might might be, do we have to make any modifications to lunches, to arrival, to dismissal, to transportation, to recess? Is this social distancing still going to be on the radar screen? I mean, I'm I'm sad that we're out for the remainder of the year, but I'm glad we're out for the remainder of the year, because if you look at some of the nations that have had a decline, and now a resurgence in the number of of cases of the virus, you know, I'm glad that we're not going back too soon. So but there's a lot of things that we're going to be, continue to be looking at, some we're looking at right now, that will address basic building maintenance, capital improvements, technology that we're dealing with also, the wonder world. But also, what do we have to do to make sure the children and staff are safe when school reopens? So those can't be left to two weeks before we need to implement them. So we're starting to talk about them now.
And we also have some of the just smaller details. When teachers and students left, they assumed they would be returning. And at that point, we've never thought would be out for the remainder of the school year. So there may be some student belongings that are left in lockers, or teacher belongings that are left in classrooms, especially for those students who are leaving, you know, going from eighth grade to ninth grade and going to a whole new building. It's important that we come up with some way or decision around how students can get their belongings and teachers as well. So we'll begin to think about that. We'll start the conversation tomorrow. We're meeting with the principals.
Yeah, we sent out a communication to them today, indicating that we want a consistent process and approach to it. And as Carrie said, we will be discussing that with them tomorrow, and if necessary, a leadership meeting on Friday also.
Well, and I think the state also is indicating they'll be issuing further guidance later in the week regarding, you know, things to consider when reopening buildings. So it'll be a work in progress.
We just had a question about getting things from lockers. And I know you guys are going to put a plan into place. What if a student left things that they need to finish the year with, binders for court classes?
Well, we'll be arranging time sooner rather than later for students to come in and access their items. Now that we know for certain, as of today, that we will no longer have classes for the remainder of this year, we won't wait on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Other questions for anybody on the COVID updates? Okay. I think we're going to do a brief update, a follow-up from last week on the K to 2 space utilization. I think Chris had asked for kind of an understanding of where we're fitting everybody in. And thank you very much for providing those floor plans from the principals. This is not meant to be a conversation to reopen the FDK conversation. That is something that is is a big, big conversation. We've had ongoing, I would say, at this point. And we are, I I believe the administration is doing their very best to meet the needs of all the students in in town as best they can with the financial place that we are in right now. Bill, do you have anything else?
Well, just, you know, I would echo the thank you to the principals. As you know, that's a that's a site-based decision, based on proximity of different grade levels and how different groups operate in terms of kindergarten, preschool, first, second grade, particularly at the primary levels. So they've done a great job of signing the full-day K classes, and particularly that fourth full-day kindergarten section. As you can see, the schools are are beginning to fill up in terms of capacity, although there are some spaces that we can consolidate. Because as you know, in education, sometimes people like to expand to fit the space. And so we know that down the road, if necessary, we can consolidate some some spaces, particularly in schools like the Miller and the Christopher Fuller. Now, NABNACIT will continue to be tight. But I think the principals have developed a good plan for the Robinson and the NABNACIT, the additional full-day K class. And as you know, the Miller is remaining with three full-day K classes. In terms of the waiting list, there is currently no waiting list at the Miller, no waiting list at the Robinson. There is a waiting list of 12 students at the NABNACIT. And, you know, we would love to be able to accommodate that waiting list. But from a financial perspective, from a planning perspective, we just don't have the resources to be able to do that.
Just to add to add on to that piece, there was some questions from some of you around the number of students in each of the full-day kindergarten classrooms last week. So going over that with the principals at the Robinson and the NABNACIT, there are four classrooms with 20, 20, 19, and 19. And those two 19s are because we have agreed that we're holding a spot in the case that there are any move-ins throughout the year, where a student requires a full-day kindergarten per their IEP. And then at the Miller School, where they're going to continue with three full-day K classes, not adding a fourth, they are at 19, 19, and 18, and that's based on the amount of people who were interested. So in theory, if two move in, then we could go 20, 20, 18. So there's two additional available spots for anybody who may come in and be interested at the Miller School.
So that changed, because last week it was 21, 21, 21.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you for the update on that. Committee members, any questions on space? I thank the principals again for putting that together. Megan has a hand up.
I just had a question, follow-up to that, and then a request. So the question is, with those 12 that are waitlisted at NAB, if they were to desire full day, such that they wanted to choice their child to Miller for one of those available slots for the year, knowing that they would give up busing as an option and be then not be in their districted school, is that an option? Should a parent feel that they truly need full day, whether they, you know, it's a childcare time issue, or that they just educationally feel that that would benefit their child?
I think we probably have to wait a little bit, Megan, into the into the year to see if there are some placements that need to be accommodated. That's a difficult question to answer. We could have something by the end of this week. We could have something by the end of the, you know, the third week in school. Courtney, any from your observations and history? Anything you can contribute to that from your perspective?
In terms of numbers that we're bringing in?
Well, in terms of the possibility of those two reserved spots in full-day K, Megan was asking the question, if it doesn't look like they're going to be occupied, can a parent essentially open and roll from one district to another district that has those, one of those, both of those openings?
If that would occur, it would happen very, very late or early into the school year. And the reason why we hold those spots is because there are other communities that have full-day kindergarten. And so when some of the students move in, if their IEPs are already written for a full-day kindergarten program, we have to be able to provide that spot for them. So that's why we keep a little bit of a buffer. At some point, those numbers traditionally have, those seats traditionally have been released.
So I think, Megan, are you referring to the, because at Miller, there's 19, 19, and 18. So in the class of 18, in theory, those are the two spots that are held for students who's who may have been whose IEP warrants full day. But there's still two slots that are not held or pegged for those students who may enter the district. And they would be available if there was interest at Miller. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, I'm just trying, you know, I I understand that we've had the discussion about financially what is possible this year. And of course, there are still community members and parents that are frustrated by that and certainly feel that full-day K is something that they want as an option. So I guess I'm preemptively asking the question that maybe they didn't even know is a possibility, but perhaps could come up and exist to serve their own needs or feelings, if that was the best fit for their child. But yes, Carrie, that's what I was referring to, was those, knowing that that was that spot. Because of course, we've always reserved spots for move-ins that would require it. But it sounded from those numbers as if there were potentially a few additional, a couple of additional spots. And so I was asking that question. And then, so, okay, sorry, go ahead, Bill.
No, I was gonna say, although I do believe that it would be best to follow the lottery rank order that we have already put in place, just to be fair and consistent.
Yep. And so then my only other comment, I guess, because I don't know that I'll still be on the committee when we have this bigger discussion about kindergarten, I know where we stand for this year. But in future years, I would just ask that in the discussion, that there be a focus on what the plan looks like for accommodating the desires of the community going forward.
Yeah, Megan, you're breaking up.
Megan, you don't have audio.
We'll come back to Megan in a minute. She, we lost her audio. But we will make sure that we understand what she's looking for as we have future discussions about FDK, because I don't think it's something that's going to fall off of our radar anytime soon. There is one question in here, and I, Bill, if you can answer it briefly. I really don't want to go into a lengthy discussion about FDK. But one parent has asked that they feel that denying FDK to some and not others is not in compliance with the equal access to education law.
I didn't hear the first part of your statement.
It said, this is a parent asking, what about the fact that allowing some students access to FDK and denying it to others is not in compliance with equal access to education law?
Well, if if we funded a full-day kindergarten out of the school Well, if we funded a full day kindergarten out of the school department budget in entirety, and then we're denying some students, that would be one thing. But with limited resources, and we have known for years that the only way we can provide full day kindergarten is by providing half the cost complying with a half day requirement that the DESE states, but being fee based. And with the demand in excess of availability, we have always and consistently made it clear that we would have to engage in a lottery, that unfortunately, we would not be able to meet the, the needs of every single parent. And that's regrettable. And I, and I hope that sometime in the next few years that we have the funds to appropriately fund a full day program. But I, I understand that virtually nothing in this world is fair and equitable when you come right down, particularly when we have such limited resources and capacity and capability to provide the programming to students. And we have to, we have to have a lottery for those who are not able to access it.
Thank you. Any other questions briefly before we move on? On, go ahead, Gloria.
The other question I had along the lines of the questions we have been receiving in emails we've gotten about parents who are disappointed that they cannot access full day K, unfortunately. One of the ways we have at least tried to help meet the needs of those families in the past has been for those families that weren't able to get full day K, there was the extended day program. And I understand that's been discontinued, if I understand correctly, at all three elementary schools at this point. It sounds like at Miller and Robinson, so far, we're being able to accommodate those families who want the longer day. But at NAB, we've been unable to do so. I know from the floor plan, obviously, that's been provided to us, that space is at a premium at the NAB. But is, is there any possibility of having an extended day option at the NavNas at school?
From a space perspective, Gloria, I don't, I don't believe so. The, the only option that would be conceivable is if we had a, we have spare location, for example, of the Miller School, but those students would have to be transported in those transitions costly, but also they're not good for children in terms of leaving their home base school, going back and going to another school and then coming back for dismissal if necessary. We've looked at that in the past and we've, we've repeatedly said to ourselves, that's not, that is not desirable. And for parents keeping, please keep in mind, the extended day is daycare. It's not a quasi kindergarten program. It's not the same program as full day K. It is daycare. And so there are other options, and I don't mean to sound, you know, uncaring because we've all, we're all parents and grandparents. But there are only so many things that we can do to meet the needs of, of, of parents.
Megan, you had a question. You're back with
Can I try, can you hear me? Can I try one more? This is just a very pointed comment. And I know that we, I don't believe this is how this year's lottery was approached. But I would ask that if we do continue to have a lottery system, if we continue to be unable to fully fund full day K, one change I would really like to see happen, well, two changes, is I would like to have a district wide kindergarten information night prior to the individual lotteries at each school that addresses the question.
We lost you again. Megan froze again. We'll get it in writing and get it to Bill, I think.
I think that's a very good idea, though. I heard the, certainly the part about the district wide kindergarten information night.
You did hear that.
She's still
So I'd like, I'd like that. And then, sorry, I don't know why it's freezing so much. Can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
No?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then my other question would be from an access standpoint. Because of the cost of kindergarten, I think it does prohibit some families from even considering it as an option, even if educationally or developmentally, that's what they feel is best for their child. And so I'd ask that in the future, if we have to have a lottery system, that we approach the lottery by explaining to families, please choose what you feel would best suit your child and your family, regardless of cost, do the lottery. And if we do have a couple of families who require financial assistance to access that, should they be pulled for that program, that we address that and meet their needs. Because I would hate for the fee associated with full day K to prohibit any family in our community from accessing it.
I think that's a very valid point that we, we talked about about 10 years ago when I first gave a report on the need for full day kindergarten and fully funded in the school budget. Because we don't want to create the haves and the have nots.
Yes, I remember having that discussion with you, Bill, before we launched the full day K committee. We were really looking for options so that we didn't have a have and have nots.
Right.
We will continue to delve down that. Okay, so I have a couple more. There's a couple more questions, but I I think we can answer those offline for right now. New business. We don't have anything listed, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to cover. Bill, I think we had talked briefly, and I think the committee, we'd like to return to our regularly scheduled meetings and not. And at this point, I think we're under control. And we'd like to go back to meeting every other week and giving administration some time to catch their breath now that we know sort of the direction we are headed for the rest of the year. Are there any concerns or questions for that?
And we could always schedule interim meetings if necessary.
But right now, I think you guys, you guys have a lot to sort of untangle. And so we'd like to give you that space.
You know, I appreciate it. Just, just very quickly, I have to tell you, and I think Carrie and Ingrid and Courtney would say the same thing. Right now, I think we spend three times the amount of time on remote meetings than any face to face meetings we have ever had. And we have five times the amount of emails that we have ever had. And honestly, every day, it's a game of catch up. And with meetings overlapping, some of us running from one remote meeting to another remote meeting and then trying to catch up on emails. So thank you for the breather.
Virtually running from one meeting to the other.
Virtually, that's correct.
Your fingers, your fingers are running across the keyboard.
Yeah, no, no trains involved in the, in running.
And the other piece is that I know we're all experiencing difficult and uncertain times. And the school committee wanted to share some positive news with the Westford community. The school committee and the superintendent have reached a one year contract agreement. And we look forward to continuing work together to implement the goals of the district and keep Westford moving towards the future and moving forward. So at that, I just wanted to let people know where we were with that before we go on to the next approval.
I just say thank you, and thank you, and I look forward to continuing to work for a school system and a town that I have so deeply loved and tried to commit some hard work to. And so thank you.
Thank you. My turning, Chris, do you have warrants?
I do. Stand by. Okay, motion to approve payroll warrant number 2043 SP dated April 23rd, 2020 in the amount of $2,011,517.09.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And then we need to do a roll call. So Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye, so it's unanimous.
Motion to approve expense warrant number 2043 SE dated April 23rd, 2020 in the amount of $319,368.43.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call again, Megan? I think I saw her say aye. Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen? Thumbs up, aye. Gloria?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay, so we have unanimous on that one. We have minutes to approve, I believe. Did we?
Yes, yeah, I am here. Sorry, hold on. Oh, my gosh, this is a disaster. Regular, where is it? Regular session minutes dated April 6th, 2020 and April 13th, 2020?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, roll call, Chris?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Ming Chen? Okay, Alicia?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye, so it's unanimous. And then, Bill, are you going to give us a quick personnel update?
Yeah, it's just very brief, not much, but the most notable loss to our system is Mark Su, who will be leaving our science department to take a job in another school system.
Bill, can I ask a quick question about two of the hires? Their start dates, one is a long term sub and one is a substitute with start dates, future start dates. Will they be retained or how will that, those be handled within April 27th and May 29th effective dates?
Well, your question is, will they, will they be retained? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, with the hire date out, with school closed.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about those. I don't remember off the top of my head what those two positions, who they're filling in for. So if you'll give me just a little bit of time for our next meeting, I'll, I'll give you that explanation. I'd hope to have it by this, by tonight's meeting, but I just didn't.
Okay, and?
So generally, the long term subs are for teachers that are out on leave for maternity or health reasons. And so they would be, the long term sub would be the teacher for that classroom or subject. So it just depends, you know, if, if the leave is still going to be taken. And I believe those leaves are confirmed. Okay, we, we will definitely circle back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like a very fine time, so. Okay.
So are those long term subs taking over for remote learning?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
I, I assume this goes without saying, but, because I know you will have this covered. But obviously, that's very different than a long term substitute coming into a physical building. So of course, we'll just need to make sure that long term sub has all the support they need to take over in this context and be introduced to their families that they'll be servicing. But, but I'm sure you'll have that covered.
That's where the building principal and the curriculum coordinators play a very important role. And their colleagues.
Chris, do you want to call us out?
I motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open visit, in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not return to public session.
Second.
Thank you, and we'll do another roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Ming Chen? Alicia?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye, so we have unanimous. We will not be returning. I thank you all, and we will post our next meeting, which I believe will be May 4th.
Now, we have a new link, Chris, for the executive session?
Yes, it should be in your inbox. I'm emailing it about now.
Aye.
Aye, so we have unanimous. We will not be returning. I thank you all, and we will post our next meeting, which I believe will be May 4th.
Now, we have a new